Ms. Rosetti.
I'm here, but I can't see anybody.
Yeah, yeah, I forgot to hit the unmute, so we start again. Good evening, today is October 11, 2022, Mayor and County Council Borough of Flemington. We are, we do have an executive session scheduled for this evening that will be going into momentarily. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of October 11, 2022 was included in a list of meetings started since the Huntington County Democrat and Courier News on January 5, 2022, posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall and on that date, and has remained continuously posted as required. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the Office of the Borough Clerk. Now you can take your roll call.
Ms. Hand, Mr. Johnston, Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Parker.
Here.
Ms. Rosetti.
Here.
Ms. Tilly.
Here.
If you would go ahead and pause the recording and lock the meeting, please.
Give me one second to lock, it's just coming right here. Just.
Yeah, that name, if that's her name, she has to change, they can't go into the meeting, please.
If we lock it up.
No.
Okay.
Go ahead and lock the door too. We didn't make the motion either, keep it open till we get. Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and move on. If we could have a motion to enter into executive session for attorney advice regarding potential shared service agreements and personnel matters.
Tilly, you'll move.
One second. Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
And no action will be taken on the subject of this executive session this evening. Now you need to pause the recording and lock the meeting. No, it's not the surgeon. Just forgotten to wave to Lauren.
We haven't officially started yet, right?
No.
Who's on beautification?
I don't remember.
Liz, are you beautification?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
It may have been Caitlin, which means it would be Tony now. Oh, well, Tony doesn't want to hear what happened.
I don't know, I don't even know.
You think that you have to worry about beautification. Christmas lights go up, Christmas lights come down, and do it, we need to clean up.
This is my first time looking at that one, so.
Yeah, I have to double check. You better just carry it on.
I know it's not a thing.
I don't know that it needs to be told to person arranging for the lights to go up and go down either. It actually didn't mean, you know.
That's what he thinks about that.
Yeah, it was Caitlin.
I didn't hear any much. I'm okay.
Yeah, we ordered LED lights for those some things too. So, you know, you just have to get on the schedule with them, and you would take care of that, get those out.
Yep.
And then we can figure out getting down at the end of January. Good evening, it's 7:00 PM. This is a work session for the Mayor and County Council Borough of Flemington. We do have a work session this evening. We have Lauren Vivona here, Safe in Huntington regarding domestic violence awareness. If you would again do a roll call for the work session.
Absolutely. Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Here.
Ms. Tilly?
Here.
So Lauren Vivona is a former police officer here, happily retired, now rocking it in a new gig with Safe in Huntington. And October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and so she's here to tell us what Safe in Huntington is doing and Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Huntington County in Flemington. Lauren, welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for having us on the agenda this evening. So Safe closed for a brief time and reopened in August of 2021. So we have been back in service for a year, but even more exciting, we have been back to in-person service for DDRT and CVSA calls, which I'll explain in a minute, since March. So starting in August, our safe housing was completely operational, and from there, we moved on to working directly with police departments, the local hospital, and also Superior and Municipal Courts to provide advocates to survivors of domestic violence. So when someone shows up at the police department seeking a restraining order or looking for information on safe housing, we send someone out in person to meet with them, to answer their questions, provide emotional support, and then also offer them the full umbrella of our services, which we did bring brochures for the one in attendance. And then I have some to give up to. One of the things that I am most proud about our program is when the new director came on, who made a commitment to hiring a staff that reflected the community. So amongst staff, I think it's nine different languages are spoken. We offer an incredible amount of, we always do have translators available, but you know, to really have that in-person connection and be able to provide above and beyond the language line is incredible. Our staff is, I think, at the last count, five different countries are represented amongst staff. And we make a point of reaching out to the LQET, each made me cards with a plus, to all of the various communities because we understand that the more marginalized a population is in Huntington County, then more difficult it is for them to use services. So we created teen programs, we're actually starting in South Huntington as our first high school that we're doing a prevention program in, which I am incredibly excited about, not just because of them all, that's where we, you know, my group, we're going to be. So they are, we're going to be doing some media literacy, we're going to be talking about some different ways that gender violence starts with people's beliefs as they're growing up. And we really put a lot of effort also into reaching out to our police departments and not only making sure that our advocates are there to support clients when, you know, at their crisis moment, but even through small progress. We put comfort baskets and hygiene items in all of the local police departments for women because one of the things that I realized when I was a police officer is that that kind of stuff isn't available if there isn't a female officer working. So we did, you know, we got, I got two private grants to support those, and that was one of the first things that we did. So, you know, and we actually keep a replenishment box so officers can available in time. In addition, we are providing quarterly trainings for police officers that go above and beyond the required meetings for them to attend. And we are providing direct training on various populations that we're serving. The last one, we actually focused on children and domestic violence. We had a survivor who gave an interview, which we then paid for the officers. And we are back to in-person programming as well. So I brought some flyers for our upcoming vigil, which is the 20th, that the store court has in Flemington. I'm sure you guys have got the invitation, they didn't mail them out regulars now, as well as emails. But we definitely invite everyone to attend to really give support to our clients and our survivors. Typically a very well-attended event, you know, this year, you know, it's just, it's really significant to be back in person and really inviting them into both services and to show of support. You guys have any questions on the new programming or?
Yeah. You're not serving men anymore, I didn't see anywhere.
So we, we absolutely serve both genders. I have multiple gender identities, as well as male and female clients reflected on our client list. I've had male survivors in our safe house, as well as in our hotel housing program. And all auxiliary services, including counseling and our advocacy programs are available to all residents.
I had the opportunity to meet your new director. She came to, when the Flemington Borough did their police, citizens' police academy. She is, I had worked, volunteered my time at Safe when we first moved down here as a way to get back to the community. And you could tell she just had a renewed sense of, not urgency, but she knew there was a need.
And. Yeah, she's my director.
Looking forward to.
And yeah, she is absolutely phenomenal, and it was just really, you know, when the board came back together to reform the organization, there are only, I think, two staff members that they brought back from old Safe. And considering that we have over 25 people on staff, I think the entire, you know, cleaning of, you know, totally recasting every spot is pretty significant and just was a huge undertaking on the part of the board. But, you know, and then also transparency, they brought in a finance director, they added in some financial safeguards as far as both spending on, you know, the regular kind of budget items that you guys, you know, have in front of you all the time, as well as programs, and really evaluating each of our programs for how to best spend the money so that it's serving the greatest number of people. And the changes compared to, you know, what it was when I worked with them as a police officer, and where we are now are huge.
It's like two different organizations.
Like, I talk about work and I smile, and, you know, not hurting anybody's feelings, but five years ago, that was not the case, so.
Are your offices in Flemington still?
So we are no longer at the old East Main Street location. We are actually underneath the umbrella of the Huntington Medical Center. We developed a 10-year commitment from them. So, yeah, they were able to provide us with some different administrative office space that we're keeping as not a confidential space like the safe house, but we are keeping it as quieter just because we are doing in-person counseling out of that location. But, yeah, they provided us with administrative office spaces part of that 10-year umbrella. So it is wonderful because donor dollars are going to actual services for clients and not office space. And we changed how we take donations to, you know, kind of kept up with the times. We have stuff like an Amazon wishlist on our webpage, so as, you know, especially today with Crime Day going on, especially with kids coming into the safe house. You know, we have sometimes people arrive at the safe house with literally nothing but the clothes on their backs. When they walk in the door, everybody, men, women, children, get an entire new set of pajamas, new clothing. And if there's, you know, specific toys, specific item that children want, we can always put it on the wishlist. The safe house is beautiful. People that come into the safe house often remark that it's not what they expected it to be at all. It's very homestyle, and families, you know, they're given their own bedrooms. It's with the exception of one suite, everybody even has their own bathroom for family. There's a huge playroom. The Friendly Sons of St. Patrick have been extremely generous with time, and we built a huge play structure outside for kids. So it's a very healing place to be. Yeah, but we are local.
Could you do a flyer just for men? Because I know how hard it is and stigmatized it is for men to actually reach out and help.
Absolutely, we do, we do have, I'll make sure to get our prevention educator to send some over for you. But, you know, even with our counseling services, we actually do have a male counselor on staff too. We have men on staff as well as women, which I think kind of, you know, in the male clients that I've had, that's made a difference when I have mentioned that, you know, when they're going from the crisis situation with me into the overall umbrella of services, people like seeing that they're professionals reflect that, either, you know, race, gender, religion. You know, there's certain cultural issues that they are more comfortable disclosing to someone that fits them. So it's why we're so convinced of having a staff that really matches the community.
All right, so you have one black person or?
Oh, more than that. My counterpart is black, she is actually from Jamaica. Our finance director, who recently switched off, but is coming back on like a per diem basis. He too, I think he originated from Haiti, and, you know, it's just a very, very diverse group of people.
I can't hope. So how are these flyers being distributed, for curiosity?
So we do, every single police department and medical office, both the medical center, urgent care centers, and the regular doctors' offices do have copies of our brochures. We also charge at places like Legal Aid, Food Banks, you know, Huntington County is interesting compared to other counties that we work in because we are a dual agency, we serve both domestic violence and sexual violence victims. Other counties are individual, but in Huntington County, we find that often, you know, members of our community who either because of status and wealth, when they experience domestic violence, they either report it to their attorney first and then take steps forward, or the barriers are more significant out here because of transportation and sometimes cultural issues. So we also do outreach with a few different churches who are very receptive to referring certain situations to us. We have a program that's currently active in the women's prison and reaches out to, because a lot of incarcerated women are actually survivors of domestic violence, actually statistically a terrifying number of them. So we are even, you know, reaching out to prisoners and women.
So when I said flyers, I meant this particular flyer, like how is?
Oh, this one, so this has been mailed to every police department, every town council, you know, all of the county commissioners should have gotten a copy by now, hopefully the post office has kept up with our interns exceptionally busy, busy, busy in stacks of flyers work, but yeah, we've distributed them, we're coming out to town council meetings, we're going, you know, any place that will have us, we're showing up to, you know, talk about how happy we are with the relaunch.
I'm sorry, is this also bilingual and bilingual?
So our services are the, oh, so vigil itself won't be, but there are some bilingual flyers.
And just bilingual as well?
Yes, and I actually, I have some took it in the lobby, and I'm sorry, we got it, brought some for the staff machines too.
Yeah, and I've seen both versions, the English and the Spanish version in my doctor's office, so I know they are out there in the community.
Any other questions for Lauren?
This is great.
Thank you.
Good luck to you, I'm honest, it's really good, this is very good. And just so that you know, there's church around here, that this would be pretty interesting to get.
Okay. Nice. Well, thank you very much for your time, very much appreciate being able to come back home and talk about something that I am so very passionate about. And, you know, I am always, always available to phone calls, I'm actually often still on call, so I do sometimes respond out to borough leaders and for engagement for you recently. So activation wise, also if you guys were wondering, we're averaging roughly 20 in-person activations a month for domestic violence. And those numbers are increasing as, you know, the prosecutor's office and MOU start to happen for us. And we're averaging lately three to four CVSA or sexual assault calls a month too. So, and we will serve any sexual assault victim over age 12.
Is that throughout Huntington?
Yeah, that's throughout Huntington.
Did you say 20?
Uh, 12.
12.
Yeah, for a sexual assault victim.
But on the domestic side?
Domestic 12, we're averaging about 20 a month right now, and we do expect that number to increase because as of right now, you know, with testing us out, it took some time, you know, as it would if an organization completely breaks down and relaunches to really get officers to buy in with calling us again. But one of the things that we did was we guarantee a 30-minute response time for a DB. So if it's domestic violence, we will be at a police department within 30 minutes. And that seems to have made a really big difference because, you know, towns like the borough, sometimes it's, you know, a minimum number of officers covering a maximum amount of calls, uh, time really matters. So improving the call-out term, I think, for officers has really helped with the buying. But, yeah, we're expecting once the MOU gets where officers are no longer, it's no longer discretionary thing, I think that we're going to be between 30 and 40 calls a month.
30 and 40 calls?
Yeah.
Where does that stand in terms of other counts? Where does that stand?
So.
That average, is that?
We would compare ourselves to, really, like Sussex County is probably closest to us, and our numbers are higher than theirs, and then after that, closest would be Warren County. But Warren County, it's tough to get comparisons for because they aren't doing in-person activations. So, you know, they're doing stuff over the phone and kind of, so they're, the way that they gather data, I can't really compare ours. But us, you know, post-launch as opposed to before, if there were three or four activations a month before, you know, Safe had shut down as compared to now, we did see a spike in DB post-COVID, not so much during, but in the aftermath, the numbers have been significantly higher. And it, it won't be for some time until the real analysis is done, but, oh, I've heard a lot of theories, you know, people didn't want to call for the same reason, that people were having heart attacks at home because they didn't want to involve more, you know, more kind of people either in their home or more exposures. And then also people were afraid that they wouldn't have somewhere to go because of COVID. So, you know, that's also understandable. We also provide legal advocacy, and she's averaging 35 to 40 clients a month. And she's phenomenal, like, yeah, she's actually, so she is an attorney from Puerto Rico. So she has not taken the New Jersey bar yet, so she can't provide actual legal advice, but she does such a great job with her clients. And she's bilingual and absolutely brilliant, just one of my favorite coworkers. Yeah, the services are, are definitely there, you know, the staff that's providing them is enthusiastic, and we really appreciate the time and any referrals, and if you have a specific population or a specific group that you think would benefit from having us come out, we're more than willing, you know, we're very open to engaging with the community, doing events with the community. You know, I've worked with the FCP recently, and one of the other things that we have coming up, since it was rescheduled, Harvest Fest. The fire department typically does it, but they had a conflict of dates, so before it was rained out. So we are actually going to be pouring beer for Safe in Huntington and Harvest Fest. So the more people that come out to support us, you know, the better off the organization is going to be. So we also look forward to seeing you guys there.
Nice.
Yeah, we have.
Congratulations on being such a key part of getting this organization on to, yeah.
Thank you, it was really exciting to be in something from the ground up. I didn't realize what that would be like until I was in the middle of it, you know? But I think, you know, everybody that knows me and has known me for so long can tell, like, you know, this is like.
I can tell you're passionate about it, and you are passionate about it, and that's what makes it work, so congratulations.
But, yeah, those 2:00 AM activations, we're there, you know, it doesn't matter the time. And, you know, it's the same with the safe house, like, the women that answer the hotline, it is 24/7 hotline. We have clients that call from everything, from, you know, needing information on a restraining order to needing to be talked on after having an anxiety attack, and it's fully staffed, functional, and waiting for phone calls. All right, thank you very much for your time.
Well, continue the good work, Lauren, we're proud of you and of Zay.
So we'll be in a tournament until 7:30.
Thank you.
Hang up, Lauren. Um, good evening, today is October 11, 2022, and this is the regular meeting of the Mayor and County Council Borough of Flemington. This meeting is being held pursuant to provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of October 11, 2022 was included in a list of meetings started since the Huntington County Democrat and Courier News on January 5, 2022, posted on bulletin board at Borough Hall on that day, and has remained continuously posted as required. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the Office of the Borough Clerk. Good afternoon, for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberated, and peaceful, for our home.
Ms. Hand?
Yes, or here.
Yes. Mr. Paul?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Ms. Rosetti?
Here.
Ms. Tilly?
I am still here.
Third time. We didn't have an executive session earlier, and now I'm going to be taking on that as regarding a potential shared service agreement. The agenda did say personnel matters, well, that did not come hanging around on the time. And however, what happens must take or is expected to be taken this evening. We also had a work session, we have a former police officer, Lauren Vivona, coming from police officer, who now works for Safe in Huntington, doing wonderful things, coming in to reinformations all with Safe in Huntington. I only have a couple items to report. The night work on Main Street continues, and my apologies to those residents there. I know that it's noisy, I was out there last night as well. You know, it's unfortunate that people were driving safely through the work zone, and it kind of forced us to make a decision, there were two bad choices, was Main Street during the business day, and then people can't get to work, and businesses are affected, or close Main Street at nighttime and do the work at nighttime. And so the nighttime work was the better of two really bad options. There were two accidents in the work zone when they were trying to do the work while keeping Main Street open. And I'm sure most, many of you probably drove through it, it was really not, not sustainable to do it that way. Couple items on the agenda this evening for first reading as well, adding two crosswalks to Stangle Road, much overdue. Don't want you to see that for a few years. I have been led to believe previously that getting a mid-block crosswalk was next to impossible. And since then, I have learned that's not the case, and the different experts I have consulted on that. And the other one is also making Corcoran a one-way street and north one-way, and that's kind of out of necessity so that we can rebuild Corcoran, so the horrible, horrible shape that road is in. The pipes underneath can be done, and there's no way, the engineering just wasn't working to try and keep it two ways, add sidewalks required by the DOT, and get that work done. So that will be considered tonight for first reading as well. That is all I have, we'll start online with the. That is all I have. Uh, we'll start on, uh, online with the Council groups and Jess and first.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I have some good news about the Flemington Borough Community Garden. Habitat for Humanity reached out that they do have some funds available, and we are looking to put up the fence, um, at the end of October, beginning of November. So fingers crossed that that all goes through. And then I had a meeting for the Community Energy Planning Grant. Uh, Flemington Borough was awarded this twenty-five thousand dollar grant to help the borough work towards a better environment for all residents. Uh, we are still in planning stages, and if you are interested in being involved, uh, please send me an email to at jhand@historicflemington.com. And that goes for council members and, you know, anyone else that wants to be involved. Uh, Flemington DIY has a ton of new events. Uh, there are theater, uh, workshops, uh, print club, live music, knitting, crocheting, and more. Uh, please visit their website, FlemingtonDIY.org to see their full list of events, and that is it for me.
Okay, next up is, uh, Councilwoman Liz Rosetti.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have anything to report tonight. Thank you, though.
Okay, uh, starting to my left, we'll go to, uh, Councilman Malik Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, for the library, uh, the basement mediation process is about to begin. With SFP dealing with the asbestos in the mold. Um, the summer reading program went well. Um, October thirteenth at seven PM, they will be doing the bedtime stories for Halloween. Um, the library catalog is now available online, FlemingtonLibrary.org. Um, they also have dominoes every Wednesday at seven PM. Um, in regards to the museum. Ava, who was the yoga instructor for the Tuesdays, uh, she gave over a three hundred dollar donation to the museum, uh, your resident, uh, last week. Uh, but you're more than welcome to go to a life and balance, uh, and continue. I think October eighth, there was a pumpkin event where you're able to pick and decorate supplies donated by ShopRaid, which amounted to about fifty small pumpkins, and they donated the refreshments. So shout out to Sharon, uh, and catering. Uh, you have the tricky tray, which will be coming up. I don't have a date yet, but, uh, Large Foundation gave a grant for twenty-five hundred. But the court's caseload is up eighteen percent from prior year. Court is still virtual, uh, except for special circumstances. Usually they only speak Spanish at this point. Uh, that's all right.
Good. Next up is Councilman Tony Parker.
So I don't have anything to report, but what I will say is that I am working on a couple of things in the community, um, giving the community more involved in, um, in what we're doing and what they're hearing. And, uh, so I'm going to have one report on that, um, later on down the road, but I'm pretty excited.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Next up will be, uh, Councilwoman Kim Tilly.
Uh, we had a DBW meeting today. We talked about Julie Av and we're down to punch lists on that project. The Hopewell Avenue Project is supposed to start on the twenty-fourth. Uh, loose leaves will be collected on the curb starting the twenty-first as well. So this will, we wish to have a big leaf cleanup before Halloween. Please, no garbage, no brush, no leaves and bags. These need to be just loose leaves, just ripped to the curb. Um, I'll be having a resolution for the new emergency operations plan today. My upcoming meetings are the eighteenth, so meeting with the rescue squad and OEM. I have an HPC meeting on the nineteenth. The other project I'm working on is, uh, in conjunction with the fire department, we're collecting individually wrapped, uh, individual, um, bags of individually wrapped candy for the trick-or-treat candy assistance program. If you'd like to participate, please drop off a bag or two of candy at Borough Hall between the hours at eight-thirty and four-thirty. That's Monday to Friday. If you need to request candy, please sign up on the Borough website. Distribution will take place at Borough Hall on Sunday, the twenty-second of October, between five and seven. Any questions, please contact me at six oh nine, six oh eight, two one seven nine, or Kate Tilly at Historic Flemington.
Hey, you do clean and do you know because of President Jeremy Long?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Um, I have to report from the police department. Um, as the mayor had mentioned, uh, and the police department would like everyone to know that there's a lot of construction going on and to drive with care and caution. So slow down, pay attention, and if you can, take alternate routes to avoid, uh, these construction zones. So just please be mindful is what the department wants to communicate. The police department received an award from Go Hunterdon for pedestrian safety campaign that we, uh, took part in during the summer. Police department would like to thank Go Hunterdon for their continued support that they have offered over the years. Uh, police department will be enforcing permit parking on days when school is in session and weekdays throughout the town. Police department asks that you come to Borough Hall to get your parking permit and/or visitor pass. It's for residents only. Uh, please pay attention to parking signs on your street. There have been a few vehicle burglaries and auto thefts in the community and area. Please lock your vehicle and do not keep your keys or key fobs in your car. Halloween, trick-or-treating will take place from four to eight PM on Monday, the thirty-first. Trick-or-treat treating will take place on Broad Street from William to Pennsylvania Avenue. These streets will be closed along the Bunell from Park Ave to Shields Ave. This is done for the safety of trick-or-treaters. All of the roadways and the police department asked pedestrians crossing intersections, and please watch for traffic. And as always, if you see something, say something. Call nine-one-one if you feel like there's an emergency and contact the department right away or call the, uh, non-emergency number. That's nine oh eight, seven eight, two three four, three four. Uh, some FCP news, the Hunterdon Harvest Fest was postponed to the twenty-ninth for rain. Uh, they plan to have over a hundred vendors and all but ten are from Hunterdon County. And as you heard in the work session, Safe and Hunterdon will be a beneficiary of this event. So they're looking forward to seeing another nice crowd. The FCP is working with the businesses on Main Street to produce the best annual kids costume parade contest on Main Street on Thursday, the twenty-seventh, between five PM and eight, and that will be between mine and Fulbright. Uh, on the twenty-eighth, the FCP is putting up a new event, uh, that the businesses on Stangle have organized called Stangle Witch Walk. It's a strolling event featuring, uh, an annual witch dance and what's known as an open cauldron with brews and, uh, this is a pun. I'm going to try here, booze, boo. Uh, join us from six to ten on six, uh, on Stangle Road for night filled with music, dancing, shopping, and more. We are purchasing new large holiday decorations for Main Street and hoping to light more trees. Fifteen businesses received improvement grants of fifteen hundred dollars, including five on Main Street with a mining capper, and fifteen homeowners received improvement grants of one thousand, for one thousand dollars each. Uh, and they should begin to see those improvements very soon. There's article about why we've been chosen one of the six Jersey's best, Jersey's best destinations is out with a feature on Flemington that mentions many of our businesses. This positive press is invaluable to keep customers coming to our businesses. Please forward and repost the positive news about Flemington Borough. It's a great way to support our business community, and that is my report.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we do have a motion to amend the agenda to add in the OEM. Kim, go ahead.
Yeah, I will, um, do you want me to?
Maybe we'll make the motion to amend the agenda.
I'll make the motion to amend the agenda.
Sir, a second.
Johnson, a second.
Okay. Um, and this is to add in?
It's, yeah, authorize new emergency operations plan. Um, this is a man, the, this plan is mandated by the state. Um, it allows the borough Flemington in correlation with the Office of Emergency Management to prepare for and manage emergencies, and the borough must submit this plan through the county, uh, OEMs. Uh, and then it goes to the state OEM for initial review and approval, and it's a, it recertifies every four years. So it needs to be added before it's, current.
Okay, thank you. So if we can have a motion to approve it, would be resolution twenty-twenty-two dash two oh eight?
Two oh nine.
Two oh nine.
Two oh nine. Thank you.
Tilly will move.
Parker, second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Just?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Pass.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. That brings us to our first public comment session. If you were in person and would like to make a general comment about anything, if you're here for a public hearing, you'll have an opportunity to comment here at that. If you're online and would like to make a comment?
I will have any comments later on the construction.
Now, this is when you would make that comment, please.
Oh, right now?
If you're talking about the road construction?
Yes.
Yes, yes, sorry.
Want to go to this mic or sit?
This mic, please. Come up here to, uh, identify yourself, your name and your address. Thank you.
You can stand worse than.
Okay.
But we need, yeah. And you have three minutes.
Okay. Um, so it's one twenty-six Main Street, Mike Anthony, and we're going to get my clock on. And so, um, the nighttime construction didn't work out too well last night. I don't consider it to be an option that you guys really had to take. You started during the day with the project. I know the gas line has to be set. I heard your obstacles. I understand. Um, this is the norm, though. They do these projects during the day everywhere. The norm is not in the middle of the night. This is unusual. I asked the workers. They said they never do it at night in the neighborhood. This is uncharted territory for them. They rather do it during the day. I asked a police officer there last night. He said ten years on the force, he's never seen it in the neighborhood during the nighttime. So this is not the norm. This is not a solution that anyone ever takes. I've got two sons. They didn't sleep last night. They went to school today. Do any of you live on Main Street in mind? I'll bet if you do, you didn't sleep. I know they didn't. So that's not a solution. The accident, you mentioned ever two. I beg to differ. I don't really know the details of the accident, the one with the truck. It's kind of like chalking up somebody who's in a car accident and gets decapitated and saying that they died of COVID when they take their blood later at the hospital. They died because they lost their head. They didn't die from COVID. Any more than that tractor trailer had an accident because of the construction zone. That construction zone had nothing to do with the electrification of the truck. That line was low, and that's a separate issue. So when I saw it online on the site, there were two accidents to me that came up as disingenuous. So I would like the details of the other one. That would make you keep fifty to a hundred people at night awake all night long with jackhammers, like it's outside your door. And that wasn't something that took place for a couple of minutes. It was throughout the evening. The banging never stopped. So what I'd like to do is have you guys reconsider, go back to the drawing board, figure out clearly how to make it safe. We've got great cops in this town. Anybody driving reckless, we've got enough police cars that see them all over the place, county, borough, state, chase them down and give them a ticket. This is what's done in every municipality, in every neighborhood. What you guys are doing is never done. And now we got the hotel construction. I know what's going on. It's precedent. And I can't help but think, a business that is closed today, which was, uh, Gift Horse, she's closed on Monday and Tuesday. There was no interference to her business, and today my wife took pictures of that street. It was like an old Wild West town that, like, everybody moved out of. There wasn't a car to be seen on Main Street at ten-thirty eleven AM today. I have pictures. So there's no traffic during the day. I'd like this to be reconsidered. I would like you guys to allow us to sleep. They're out there again right now, doing it again. One night, you talk about safety, it's a health issue for children and adults not to get sleep. My sons did not sleep, and they got to go and do it again tonight and the next night. That's cruel. Last point, the intangible, to me, it's like, um, humiliating. There's emotional toll here. I don't see you doing this in a nice neighborhood. Man in mine, family's there. Get away with it. It's humiliating. My son said, Dad, how can they do this outside? Look your kid in the eye and explain to them why they're doing it in your neighborhood and not another neighborhood. This is unusual. This is a first, and it should be reversed and go back to during the day.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Three minutes and fifty seconds. Thanks for your.
Thank you. Mike, please check your timer, please, so that we, the limit is three minutes, please. Thank you. Next.
Okay. I live on one twenty-three Main Street, so, right, uh, Jessica Williams. Um, so this is right under where the construction was last night, and where the construction again will be tonight, but it's already extremely loud. Um, so I think I, our neighbors have been texting. There's about fifteen of us that live in this building. Um, collectively, we just were completely terrorized last night. Like, we didn't sleep at all. Uh, we had two fans going full blast, windows fully sealed, uh, like even fabric trying to cover the windows and earphones on and the earplugs on and still couldn't sleep until it ended around five-thirty in the morning of the week. Um, it, there got to be a different way. I think possibly it was done to protect the businesses, which I understand. But it's, it's not worth the cost of terrorizing the people who live here, and I don't think it's fair. So please reconsider.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
That's my second, uh, second, whatever it was that's saying, um, Andrew Bowman, I live one point in Main Street with Jessica. Um, yeah, we, we didn't sleep at all last night. It's, you know, one night is one thing, but it seems like it's going to be going on the rest of the weekend. You know, we're, we're looking at hotels or how, looking somewhere else to go, so it's, it's real concerns.
And would the town?
You need to come off of the microphone. You can't see God come down there, and it's still your same three minutes.
Uh, would the town consider reimbursing for the hotel rooms that we are not able to sleep in our own buildings?
That would have to be discussed. Any other comments? Anyone online have a comment? I'm moving on. The consented, uh, three minutes of the September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two regular council. Tilly will move.
One second. Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Good job.
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Pass.
Okay, thank you. Next up is, uh, motion to adopt the consent agenda. Tilly will move.
One second. Okay, Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Justin? Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Get passed.
Okay, that brings us to our regular agenda. First up is ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash eighteen. This is a second reading of public hearing amended to the downtown, downtown, also known as DB zone. Uh, if we can have a motion to open the public hearing, Tilly will move.
One second.
Are there any comments regarding the extension of the DB zone northward? This is including block fourteen, lots eleven, twelve, portion of thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen dot zero one, uh, lot twenty and block eighteen, lots one, two, three, and four. Um, you would know that is the east side of Main Street northward from eight Main northward to Pennsylvania. And, um, the west side northward to the dermatology office. And that's northward from Catner to the dermatology office. We're rating basically, um, the, uh, uh, the reason for it is many of these businesses in that area are already functioning as a DB zone business, restaurants. And this opens up a lot more uses for those existing buildings there as well. Are there any public comment? I'm not seeing any lot, any hands go up. Anybody in person? Hearing none. We have a motion to close the public hearing. Tilly will move.
One second. Uh, Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
We have a motion to adopt on second reading, ordinance 22 dash 20.
Tilly will move.
Hold on a second.
There are any questions for Jim Kyle, who is here for, who is a planner?
The general, more of a general question, sure. As a planner, when you look at, like, when you make a decision like this, what, what are the factors that go into beyond? Like, we, we know that there's a few businesses already that have been functioning in this capacity. But is it just a solidified thing? Like, I'm just out of curiosity.
Well, it's huge, a couple of things, legitimizing some of the businesses that are already there. But also just promoting some of the goals of the master plan, open up some other options. You know, the office market, particularly in Hunter County's not been great. So this will open some more options for those properties. It's a logical extension of, you know, Main Street and the downtown business. So it's some economic development goals as well as just, you know, providing more variety.
Thanks, sure.
Any other questions?
I'll move.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Pass.
And next up is ordinance 2022 dash 23. This is a first reading, this is a bond wording that's for various capital improvements. If we could have a motion, Tilly will move.
Hold on a second.
This is the fire truck. It just gets the process going. The fire truck's going to take a couple of years. And, and some other stuff. We never did the capital word in it. I don't know if we have Bill Hans here.
No. Maybe he is. Here he is.
Bill, you want to run through what's in this just before we do the first reading on the votes, so everyone knows?
Sure, it's, like you said, for various improvements and, and capital purchases, which includes the police department equipment, fire department equipment, various building renovations. We like to have money set aside in the event, you know, something happens. If, you know, we needed to do roof replacement or a window replacement. So we're putting aside some money for that. And the big ticket item is the fire truck.
And so this allows us to kind of get that process going before those prices go up.
Correct. This, this will allow us to do that. And like you said, you know, we're not going to borrow the money, spend the money until, you know, probably a year and a half down the road. So it's not going to have an impact at this point.
Thank you. Okay, and we could do a little bit of that now, please.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Okay, no intro on October 20, I mean, that was a public hearing October 24.
Okay, next up is ordinance 2022 dash 24. First reading again, adding to the crosswalks on Stangle Road. We have a motion, Tilly will move.
Hold on a second.
You should all have received the traffic studies for that. Any members of public, studies they're here for all. We could probably put those online, Jim, because they're on a draft status. Call the vote on that.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Definitely, yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing on the 24th, October 24th.
Next up is ordinance 2022 dash 25. First reading again, implementing one way, one-way limits on Corcoran and North Place. If we could have a motion, Tilly will move.
Hold on a second.
And again, as I mentioned during my comments, is the purpose of this is really so we can rebuild that road. When we accept state D O T money, grant money for these projects, we have to build sidewalks. The engineering was not working on that road without making it one-way. All of the residents over the next few days will receive letters from the Borough explaining and inviting them to the public hearing on that as well. If we could call the vote on first reading?
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing on the October 24th.
Next up is second public comment session. If anyone has any other comments they'd like to make, you can raise a hand if you're online or you can get up to the microphone. Is Bill's? No, just, I never lowered it. Okay, moving on. That brings us to an attorney's report.
Mayor, I have nothing to report tonight.
And next up is a motion to pay the bills.
Tilly will move.
Hold on a second. Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
And we have a motion to, do we have any reason to go into another executive session? One is enough. We have a motion to adjourn.
Tilly will move.
Do you want to get comments at the end?
We already called and you walked in the room.
No, I, Mike understood from you today, the comments. No, we, we, I know, but we, if we, you're going down the agenda order, we actually called the second public. I just have some, just brief minute, if you don't mind. I, you know, my first rodeo.
Briefly, but we've already adjourned, we've already called.
I appreciate that, my first rodeo. So the only other thing I wanted to say is, when I spoke with Mike today, I understand you guys had Elizabeth Gass, perhaps one of the principals involved, police department involved, yourselves, right? Am missing anybody? The construction company, right? I'm thinking, who is advocating on behalf of the people whose heads are on pillows at night trying to get sleep? Do we have anybody advocate there for us? Or was that supposed to be you? Because I don't feel like we were represented in terms of anybody coming forward and saying, these people have kids that go to school and it's going to be night after night.
So the meeting's been adjourned, I'll be happy to pop you at the meeting, absolutely.
I feel like I deserve more.
Absolutely.
Well, and you know what, I'll say this real quick, so I understand, because I have the same thing that comes down my street, believe it or not. It's not just, it's not just you. But that is something, it's not, no one's attacking you and it's not because of, hold on, hold on, let me finish what you talked. But it's not that no one's not thinking about.